Three, four, five. And in my, on my screen Craig is framed in the middle. Okay, guys, since everybody's here, I think we'll go ahead and start. I'll call the meeting to order. It is 5:31. And who, Mandy, do you need to call the roll?
I do. So since this is the first time for us doing that, I'll just announce your name and you'll say that you're here.
Okay.
All right. Chairperson Jan?
Yes, I'm here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Linda?
Yeah, I'm here.
Commissioner Jamie?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Libby?
Here.
All right, so we're all here, five attending.
Evidently that roll call is in our bylaws and so we have put it back onto the agenda. Since we are on video, I don't have all my exact words that I'm supposed to say, but people who wanted to make a, an open forum comment needed to get in touch with the office by yesterday. And Erin tells me there have been no such communications. So we will go past open forum. I'm going to ask someone to request us to go into executive session now, rather than at the end of the meeting, so that we don't take so much of Craig's time.
How long would you like to go into executive session? I have it pulled up.
Craig, how long do you think we will need?
I guess I would defer to the board member. Sorry, I don't, I don't really know.
Well, I, I have to tell you that I lost the document, so I, I'm not looking at it. Somebody suggest what you think it'll take us to look through that document.
Why don't we start with 20 minutes and see how it goes?
Okay, Libby, thank you.
And do we want everyone except, or we just want the board with Craig?
Yes, please.
Perfect. Okay, so I, I moved to recess into executive session under KSA 75-4319, subsection B1. This, oh, for the purposes of disclosing personnel matters of non-elected personnel
We said 20 minutes, until 5:56.
Personnel matters of non-elected personnel related to the executive director position until, Personnel matters of non-elected personnel related to the executive director position until,
Personnel matters of non-elected personnel related to the executive director position until,
related to the executive director position until,
Need a second?
Kennedy, you actually used the word disclose, and I think you meant to say discuss.
we said 20 minutes, until 5:56. we said 20 minutes, until 5:56. I believe you're right. For the purposes of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel Need a second? Need a second?
Kennedy, you actually used the word disclose, and I think you meant to say discuss. Kennedy, you actually used the word disclose, and I think you meant to say discuss.
related, related to the executive director position until 5:56. I believe you're right. For the purposes of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel I believe you're right. For the purposes of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel And the board and Craig will be present for that meeting. related, related to the executive director position until 5:56. related, related to the executive director position until 5:56.
Need a second?
Second.
Second?
Okay, I think Libby got it there first.
And the board and Craig will be present for that meeting. And the board and Craig will be present for that meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Mandy, can you move us into another room? Need a second? Need a second?
I have to do the vote first. Jan? Second. Second.
Second? Second?
Okay, I think Libby got it there first. Okay, I think Libby got it there first. Yes, oh, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, Mandy, can you move us into another room? Okay, Mandy, can you move us into another room?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
I have to do the vote first. Jan? I have to do the vote first. Jan? Libby?
Yes, oh, sorry. Yes, oh, sorry.
Libby? Kennedy? Kennedy?
Yes. Yes.
Jamie? Jamie?
Shake your head.
Yes. Yes.
Libby? Libby? And Linda?
Yes.
Libby? Libby?
Shake your head. Shake your head. Shake your head.
And Linda? And Linda? And Linda?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, now please move us into another room. Okay, now please move us into another room. Okay, now please move us into another room.
We're zooming. We're zooming. We're zooming.
All right. All right. All right.
we said 20 minutes, until 5:56. 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 Need a second? 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 Okay. 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 Oh, I gotta join. Sorry. 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 we said 20 minutes, until 5:56. Thank you. Need a second? need a second?
Are we satisfied that we're prepared to take the action to have Craig share this document with Erin? Or do you want to go back into executive session?
I'm comfortable with moving forward with what you just said.
Okay, so.
Well, and.
My dogs.
Maybe by all means, if I can, just suggest I can send a final, final pursuant to what was discussed in executive session to the board. And I can recommend now and in the email, respond to me individually, not to the group, cannot do that. If there are concerns, if I hear none, then I will forward it on to Erin ASAP. I mean, I think there is a time element here, so.
Okay, so that is the action that we'll be taking as a result of this executive session, Mandy, however you word that. Okay, and if no one needs Craig for anything else, we'll send him off to have dinner with his parents. I suppose like that's where he's why he's there.
Yeah, yeah, kids and nephew.
Time for corned beef and cabbage, right?
You can't smell it, but it smells really great in this house right now.
It smells good here, too. Ready for us to.
All right.
Thank you so much, Greg.
If not tonight, try to get it out in the morning tomorrow.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. All right, now we will go back to the original order of the agenda. So we were at the approval of the minutes. I'm gonna unless there's an objection, I would like someone to make a motion to accept all three of those meeting minutes, and then we can open it for discussion if we need to. Somebody make motion.
I move that we approve the minutes as distributed of the February 10th special meeting, the February 17th regular meeting, and the February 24th special meeting of the board.
Thank you, Linda. I need a second.
A second.
Jamie seconds. Is there any discussion or anything people wanted to make any corrections or additions to those minutes? They were very detailed and very excellent, in my opinion. Okay, hearing no discussion, I call the question.
Jan?
Yes.
Livy? Linda?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Kennedy?
Yes. Okay, now I'm gonna I'm gonna do this one section at a time. So I'd like a motion to accept the financial reports as listed in the agenda. After that motion and second, then we will have Mandy or Erin, whoever's planning to respond, to give us a low down on that stuff. So will someone make the motion to accept the financial reports?
I move that we approve the financial reports. There are four of them in the as distributed in the agenda.
Thank you, Linda. I need a second. Maybe seconds. Okay, so is who's going to talk to us about that stuff? There was a lot of stuff.
That would be me.
Thank you, Mandy.
All right, so it looks like the first one on there is the CY 20 numbers that we have. So the December numbers that you have in front of you, they are from the fee accountant. We received them a couple last week. I had requested she made some some changes to the budget as I had submitted to her, but she had already closed the December books before making the adjustments. So some of these variants that you see on the progress report is not truly accurate because she did not make the budget changes that I had requested. But overall, we did have a decrease in our net position for December of 10,722. As you recall, we did the budget revision on December 29th to pull down more money from that second increment of funding from HUD. I had estimated that we needed about 72,000 to make the budget a zero balance. And after collecting all of the bills for December and the ones that came in in January from TCA especially, we were I should have pulled down all 90,000 of it. There's still 11,000 setting there. So if I would have pulled all 90,000, we would have been almost 300 to the good. But I did not pull that down because I did not know those were those expenses were coming until after we did the budget revision and into January. So we had quite a few TCA bills that came through and quite a few hotel bills for relocating tenants for frozen pipes, for HVAC units not working, heating units not working. So overall, we did pull 10,000 out of reserves in December. But our reserve balance is still looking pretty good. We're at $106,000, which some of you may recall two years ago, our reserve balance was negative $100,000. So we are doing better, that's for sure. I will point out on, it says page six of nine, it's the budget progress report. When she coded the last EPC payment in December, she coded it all under interest expense instead of separating it out as I requested. So it is showing a 272% variance there. But if you go down to line 70, 13.00, there's nothing in there for an expense. So that variance is zero. So in essence, if she would have coded it to the correct account, both of those would have matched out to 100% for those budget line items. And then if you go to the report that says financial assessment subsystem, this is our draft financial FDS that we submitted on February the 28th. So these are the numbers that went to HUD. And on that front page, it's going to show you that we were 430 under our revenues. Our expenses was more than our revenue. But the main reason for that $430,000 is because we have to show on our financials retirement account for staff. And so that sets on our books as a liability. And that's almost, I believe, 329,000. So in essence, we did not look very bad at all this year if you would take that liability out of there. But we have to put it on our financials for GASP rule. So but these are draft numbers. Some of them might change just a little bit once the auditor comes. And that's just because he may want to put it on a different light item than the fee accountant put it on. But I don't foresee any type of issues this year with the audit besides the one issue that we had from last year, which is the FHI side owing the Manhattan Housing Authority for salary benefits and management fees. And that did grow this year up to almost $82,000. And I know Erin had a conversation with them the other day and discussed that with them. And they were a little surprised to know that they owed us that amount of money. But they do get those bills every single month. And I believe we'll be working with them on trying to get that paid back since that's in the recovery agreement. Do you guys have any questions for me about the December financials or the FDS draft numbers?
I have a question, Mandy. Does the does the fee accountant send the accounting to you and you forward it to HUD? Or does the fee accountant send it in? How do we get it adjusted? When the fee accountant, can you send it back and have have her make factor in those variables that you talked about so that it's actually correct?
Yeah, so your first question in regards to HUD, if it goes directly there, they come to me, I review them. I have her make any changes. She sends it back to me. And then I put it in the spreadsheet to HUD, and then I actually send that on. The reason why December cannot be changed was because she was doing year end and December at the same time. And she went ahead and closed December so her supervisor could go on and work work on the FDS. It was kind of it was kind of a mess there for a while because the individual who works on the FDS got COVID. And so he was at home, working from home, trying to get the FDS submitted. So she did go ahead and close it. But usually I catch the error. She makes the adjustment and those adjustments are done and given to you guys first for approval. And then they go on to HUD after that.
So will the audit then override the end of the year report that is not accurate?
Oh, yes, definitely. And you may notice that some of the numbers in the December report are different than the FDS numbers. Because when she closed the books, there was more adjustments that I needed them to do for the FDS. And so they were done on the FDS. But the FDS override any financial report monthly from them.
We have a contract with this accountant, right? Accounting firm?
Yes, we do. We signed a two-year contract with them with the option to renew for three. So we will have them, I believe, until 2023. And then we will have to go out for a new contract.
Are we halfway through that first two-year period?
Yeah, that, yes, that that two-year period started in 2018.
So we're in. There's a two-year period and an optional additional three. So we're we're in year 18, 19, 20, 21, and 2021. So we're in year four.
Yep.
Okay, so at the end of this year, we will have to renegotiate a contract?
Correct. Yes.
Can we have any effect on that contract?
As as in what, Linda?
Yeah, I think.
Not costing us money and time.
I think as we renegotiate and go back out to there's there's two elements that are going to be factors down the road. One is our audit. When we do that, the person that we contract to do that, and then the fee accountant. And those two are part of the discussion that needs to be had with with the city staff as well for the timing of our audit to incorporate with them and then our fee account. So we have, we have absolute ability to change terms and try to, if they can't meet those deadlines, then we'll need to secure a different fee account.
And with time to go out for an RFP, I mean, you can talk with them way ahead of time about what they're capable of.
We've started, we've started talking to the auditor about that, so.
Very good. Okay.
There any, any other questions? Mandy, more you want to review or you just want questions?
I think I think Jamie has a question, maybe.
Maybe?
Yes, I just wanted to first ask, last month, we talked about the preliminary thoughts of HUD based on some preliminary numbers of where we might look. How do these revised numbers or where they sit now or the final numbers that you're projecting, how do they affect that overall rating?
So the number did change just a little bit because I took the FDS numbers, which is how they score us. I did not take these December numbers. I took our complete yearly numbers. I had projected with the draft that we would be almost about 57 points altogether. And it looks like we're going to be more closer to about 53 points. But that's that's for our whole total score, not just financial. So with physical, management, capital fund, and financial, we'll be setting about 52 points. Okay, altogether. So 60 would get us out of trouble.
Okay, does the financial component, how much did the the adjustment and what we were projecting to what we ended up? How much did that affect our preliminary numbers?
Okay.
And if you don't know this off the top of your head, we can, you can email it out later or respond in a different, you don't have to put this out there.
I can get that number for you, Jamie. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can sure get it for you. And maybe when Aaron's talking, I can step back in and let you know what that is.
Okay, it's not a huge priority, just curiosity to see kind of how we're projecting, since we know this is going to be a a topic of high scrutiny for a while. Then you mentioned in the, in the beginning of your discussion with the net income loss about a little over 10,000. You talked about the hotel expenses. Can you tell us a little bit, like, just for, again, I'm trying to think about projecting and our ability to kind of know where we're going to land before the numbers actually hit us.
Okay.
What what causes the delay there? Or how do we, how could we better manage that so that we wouldn't be caught off guard? I mean, a $10,000 swing is pretty big with hotel and budgeting.
Yeah, so the most of that was because of the TCA bills. And what what happens with that is, you know, TCA comes on site, but I may not see that bill until the following month. And I don't always know when TCA is on site and working. It probably would be good if Erin and I and Mike maybe talked a little bit more. So so I knew financially wise, how many hours they were here. Because I can kind of estimate knowing from prior bills. But I wouldn't be able to really estimate if they have to come in and fix things because they they buy the part and then they, of course, bill us for it. So but as far as the hotel stays goes, those all go on to our credit card or they are directly billed. And with the credit card, it's usually about 45 days behind before I I really know what that expense is. We could probably do better in-house when a tenant goes and stays that the staff member who who either went with them goes back and gets that hotel receipt right away. So I know in-house exactly what that cost was. But we did have several tenants in hotels at the end of December for several issues that were taking place.
I think administratively, it's it's up to what makes sense. I don't want us to create a bunch of burden based on one financial outcome. I just posed that question since it was a significant swing right at a critical time just to, just to see if it is something that we can easily get a better grasp on, or if it's something that administratively is going to cost us more time and energy to track down. So I'm not proposing anything, just throwing it out there for consideration. Then the only other thing I had is you mentioned the, on the negative 430, you said that that was specifically from something, and I was searching through the report to find it. Can you tell me what page that's on, the main contributing factor to that?
So the main contributing factor would be on page, page four of the FDS report. Under NNTY balance sheet, it is line 357. And it's called accrue pension and OPEB liabilities. And that is our capers retirement liability for the housing authority.
And that flux, was that out of what we typically see at a year end? Or was that just something that is pretty standard? Was there something driving that?
No, that's actually pretty standard. And with Joanne retiring, you'll probably see that dip a lot for 2021 numbers. Definitely with, because that's, that's exactly what the quote yearly liability is for the housing authority when it comes to capers retirement. So with her retiring in 2021, you'll see that decrease drastically. Okay. Which will help our financials.
Good, thank you. Those were my questions. I just wanted to follow up on those items. Thanks, Mandy.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions on anything in Mandy's report?
So I have a couple other things to update, Jan.
Okay.
The next thing is the 2021 operating subsidy. We got that finished and submitted to HUD, and they're they're reviewing it right now. They've been emailing me a couple of times this week. That's in review. But it looks like for operating subsidy in 2021, now this is at, this is before proration. So if HUD should come in and say they're only going to give us OPSUB based off of 92%, this number will come down. But these are draft numbers and HUD has to go in and approve them. But right now, we are setting at 608,518, which is drastically higher than our 2020 numbers. Our 2020 number was budgeted at, I believe it was 438,000, I believe. So we're about 10910,000 higher than what we were last year. And the big thing that that gives us a lot of operating subsidy is our EPC contract that we have. We actually got $213,000 worth of energy incentives just for having that EPC contract in place for for our five sites that we have. So, you know, if you, if you take that 213 off, then, you know, we're down to, you know, around 400,000 in OPSUB now. If we didn't have the EPC, we still would be getting a little more OPSUB based off of tenant utilities and our amount of utilities that we're paying in rent that's coming in. But draft numbers now are about $608,000 for MHA side of it. The FHI public housing is 123,560. So that's about 10,000 more than what we got in 2020 for FHI. But the the big driving factor there for MHA was we, last year, we were only funded off of around 1,200 units occupied. And this for 2021, we increased that to 1,856 unit monthly. So that was a huge increase for us. So that definitely was driving our more OPSUB for us in 2021.
Do we have to do a budget? Do we have to reevaluate the budget based on these changes?
We will. It's projected that these will be done and out to housing authorities the first part of April. So you will see a budget revision if they're out by then in April for sure on the next board meeting.
Do we have a budget revision this, for this meeting? Because of your salary increase?
We do. That was the new packet that came out yesterday from Aaron, and it should be on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought it was. So do we, should we do that now? Or is that?
No, he has that under new business after utility allowances.
Okay, great. Okay.
And then my last thing is the PP loan. I've talked quite a bit with Jamie in regards to this, but I kind of wanted to update you all in regards. So I did work with Kansas State Bank, and I did send an email to HUD after talking with Jamie a little bit. And HUD instructed us that he had talked with headquarters. And headquarters told them that, one, the housing authority would not be qualified to receive the PP loan. And number two was that after reviewing ACCs, they decided that it was not in the best interest of the housing authority. um, they decided that it was not in the best interest of the housing authority to go ahead with the PP loan. So I kind of put my brakes on and did not submit that. I did talk to Kansas State Bank last week and let them know that we were not going to go forward. Of course, they were a little disappointed, um, in that because they, they really thought we had a chance for it and it would really help us out tremendously. But I think I sent three or four emails between myself, Jamie and HUD and we finally said, okay, we, we finally have our answer. So we'll just leave it at that. But, um, we were definitely hoping for it, but did not work out in our favor.
Thank you for doing that work, Mandy.
No problem. So, and then my last one was budget revision updates, but we'll talk about that under new business. Other than that, I don't have anything else financial.
Anybody have any further questions? Okay, then I think we have a motion on the floor to accept this, these financial reports and I call the question.
Jan?
Yes.
Lizzie? Linda?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Kennedy?
Yes. So, last page of financials.
I'm going to start with the executive director's report and it actually starts with the black, um, page.
Black page.
But I am going to share and maybe, um, let me know if you can see the screen.
I, it just says you're sharing, but I don't see a document.
I do see a document.
There it is.
Okay. So I will walk through this and maybe, um, in the future, we will also share the financials so we can look at those lines and it'll help, uh, everybody kind of stay together on that. The, um, yeah, I changed the format of the agenda a little bit. And I just wanted, before I get into this, wanted to talk to you, let you guys know, as you are looking at your packets, as you're looking and receiving that information, like, take note or let me know while we're going through it, um, things that you want to see, things that you'd like to see differently, things that you might want to see less of or summarize differently. Um, a lot of these templates are from around two thousand and four and we can change those. I think talking through with Joanne, it's, it's kind of, there's some things that are really important to have, um, consistency on. But also as I looked around at other housing authorities and big and large all over the country, we probably have one of the most intense packets I could find. I mean, we're, we're, we're competing with Atlanta and Seattle as far as, packets wise. So that is, that is, uh, up to you guys going forward, but I will move on and go through this report. And I just want to double check with everybody. You can, I can't see you currently, so hopefully you can see the screen and you can hear me.
We can.
Okay. All right. So these are, these are kind of some of the performance measures, um, that we put together. And you talked about wanting to keep track of, um, the, I received that from, uh, commissioner, and from, I, I believe it was from Kennedy and she, she had shared the different breakdown of the months. I've consolidated those of what we've completed and we can work and refine that as we go. But just to give you a, an idea of what, what we've been up to the last really two weeks. Um, here's a report that is our occupancy report. This one looks different than what you've seen in the past because it's, in the past, I think it shows you, it gives you information, but it doesn't give you information that shows which direction we're going. Um, it, the previous stuff focuses a lot on different sites. And, um, this here, I've highlighted our actual occupancy. Now, this is, this is going into, so through the month of February. Um, it doesn't include the last two weeks, but it's up to eighty-four percent. If you look at the month of January, we were, um, at around eighty-one percent. Sorry, that's on there. Um, eighty-one percent. So, this shows you the direction we're heading and this shows you the type of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units that are available. Um, we, based on our waitlist, you can see how that lines up and what we're talking about in turnaround, move-in, move-outs, uh, in the make-ready time. So this is like a snapshot that I felt would show you where we're at, where we're headed, um, as, as a benchmark document. But I also want to add, just in the last two weeks, they've, the, we've had two staff meetings and the maintenance staff has really, um, stepped up. They're doing, they're working extra hard to turn the units around. And I know as of, if you just kind of think back to, let me see if I can pull this other. So on February fifteenth, we had thirty-two total vacancies. March fifteenth, we have thirty. That might sound like, all right, you only got two gained in occupancy. But, um, what we do have current, in the last two weeks, we've gotten things prepared so that there'll be eight units being leased by the end of this month. And this means pretty much a total of ten net gain. Now, if we continue to get ten units, because there are some people that end up moving out and there, it's, it's definitely more than just that number. We got to look at that net gained. But if we continue to get ten a month, which we were on pace to for going into April, um, we can be at a hundred percent by the summer. Now, that's if things stay, uh, stay the way that they have been going. Um, but we also know that there's some challenges ahead. Let me open up the packet again. All right.
So I have one question on that page.
Okay.
Um, down on the move-ins, move-outs, number three part.
Yeah.
Downtime days, what does that mean? One hundred and twenty-seven?
So that's kind of, the downtime days is, there's several metrics in Lindsay, and I'm pulling this from the Lindsay software, that indicate, um, units that have been vacant for a long time. And we're working hard to get those off, but they skew the numbers there. Um, so there, that, that number isn't really a reflection of anything this year, um, or even this month. It's a skewed number that has to do with how, how many days, now, if we have two hundred and two units, um, each one of those gets counted as each, if you, if every unit was vacant for one day, we would have two hundred and two days there. Um, even though it had only been one day. So it's really multiplied by however many units are vacant by the, the day that they're vacant. And so you're looking at a, a pretty exaggerate, well, it's a, it's a number that HUD finds important. Um, and that's why we're trying to get those units. When we get to ninety-seven to a hundred percent vacancy, you won't have those downtime days. You won't have, all those will come off the books that have been really racking up numbers for several years in some cases.
Okay, great. That's good.
I have a question. I have a question. Go ahead, Kennedy.
You said, um, you said we would have ten units ready to lease at the end of the month or?
A net, a net of ten. So right now we have, um, there's eight that will be, that are scheduled to be moved into by the end of this month. So in addition to the two that we leased up already.
Okay, so that seems a little higher than what we've had recently. Is that accurate or inaccurate?
Yeah, I, I definitely think it's the, and it's, it really goes back to the maintenance and focusing on the vacancies, getting those units prepared. And then Patrick and Alyssa, um, getting people ready to go in. So that timing and that handoff, and I think they're, they're doing things harder and faster than they perhaps have in the past. But we get the, we're going to catch, catch up with ourselves at some point. So, um, I don't know that we can forecast that we get a net gain of ten each month, but that's our goal. And if we continue to do that, we'll be in great shape by the summer. Um, and it'll transition from this kind of phase of where we're, we're trying to fill up the vacancies. We're not spending as much effort on maintaining and doing the, the resident service component. Um, we're just filling vacant places. So it's a different dynamic and if we put a lot of energy into the vacancies, we can get them full. But then we're going to have to pivot towards keeping everything, uh, maintained and keeping residents where they'll, they want to stay.
Okay.
Kennedy? I'll just, I'll just add, um, one thing we did in, in the maintenance department is we took the guys and we split them up. So, so they each have their dedicated site. So instead of two maintenance guys going in, trying to turn a unit around and then getting an emergency call, there's one maintenance guy at Bear Place and he's doing that vacancy. There's one maintenance guy at Flint Hills, he's doing that vacancy. There's a maintenance guy here at Apartment Towers, he's doing that vacancy. And in the last two weeks, I think that's really helped the maintenance staff because they're there. And so if there's an emergency at Bear Place, we have a staff member there instead of them having to come all the, all the way across town, take care of that emergency, then go all the way back to where they were doing their unit turnover. And they seem to really enjoy having their own community to take care of per se. So that's really helped maintenance staff, um, get units turned over.
Yep.
Yeah, that sounds really nice. I think it, yeah, and wow, okay. I just noticed that that seemed a little higher than usual, so I just wanted to find out what was happening because clearly there was a shift.
And I, I'll add that, um, I, that our maintenance staff is excited and I guess I'll touch on it in the personnel too maybe. But, um, they're, they're to, they're excited about getting these vacancies full because, um, we're talking about goals and you'll see that next month of what that looks like for them and strategic, uh, some metrics for around performance. But in addition, they, we've had a couple guys approach. Uh, Mark, one of our maintenance, uh, staff wants to come in on the weekends to do vacancies. You know, they're, they're, they're really, without much, uh, of us pushing, they've, they've shown initiative and want to get those units full. So that's in part letting them have that initiative and using their, uh, their, their tools that they already have, um, to get to that goal now that they know that's where we're, we're heading.
Uh, Aaron, one of the things that I always like to see that's not on here is how many people are on the waiting, on the waitlist? Um, if you could add that from month to month, that would be great.
Yeah, and I will absolutely add that, the, the, the waitlist for section eight is, um, obviously different than the public housing. But the public housing one is becoming, um, to a point where we got, we're going to really start needing to ask, uh, we're getting, that, that list is getting pretty short. So, uh, that is coming, well, actually I can bring that up here. Um, Patrick and Alyssa have worked with Mandy, um, to get a applicant, one-page application, pre-application form. And as, that, that'll be online, so people can do the pre-application. And we'll roll that out as we market and say, we have it, we, we need more people on our waitlist, right? Um, I've been waiting to advertise and try to push people to, um, apply and get on the waitlist and, until we get that up. And that's, that's really, they just kind of finalized that yesterday and we haven't got it up completely today to see how that integrates. But, um, yeah, we're going to backfill that waitlist and give some pre-applicat, it'll be easier to get pre-apps that way.
Is that a fillable form or is it just you print it off?
Um, definitely not a print-off, Linda. Not a print-off unless you want us to print it off for you.
No, I want it to be fillable. This is twenty-one.
There, there's actually a level beyond fillable where the, so fillable is what we were going to have for sure.
That's what I called it.
But we want to, so you, you're, you're doing the form and it's integrating that data into the backend of our website. We're already, we already have the technology to do that. We paid for it. We just need to use it. Um, it may not integrate completely with Lindsay and HUD, but this doesn't have to because it's a, it's a screening form.
Good. Faster, faster.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next page. I'm very curious about this next page.
Okay, so, um, is it sharing again?
Yes, it is good.
Okay. Um, so you guys obviously are aware that Joanne has retired. Um, Joanne is, uh, definitely, uh, she's been around and helping and doing training and getting things organized with me. But this I thought was important to have, um, her history here. She has done a lot for, uh, the Manhattan Housing Authority and, and, and public housing in general in Manhattan. You're going to hear a synopsis, uh, from, from Mandy and, and Patrick on K-Man. We did a pre-recorded interview on K-Man for a show, I think maybe next week that they're going to air. The talks a little bit about, um, Joanne and, and just the things that we're doing at the Housing Authority. But I also added this organizational chart here. Um, all right, so we have had a few staff meetings to talk about this. And I think what you're seeing is not too different, um, rather than, this, this should be what you have been used to. And the Board of Commission, of course, I, the executive director answers to them. And then we have these different levels where Mike, uh, our facility supervisor, and then he's got the maintenance two workers, maintenance one workers. We don't have a custodian and that's something that we're going to be talking to you about, um, in the, in the next month or so or, or beyond. Um, and we're also looking at some ways to get, secure some, uh, caris funding to help with that because of the pressure that it puts on our apartment towers, maintenance, maintenance worker and our, um, Carlson Plaza maintenance person. They're doing, they're, they're fulfilling the custodian role and they're trying to address the vacancies and do, um, emergency repairs in both those buildings. And if there was a way for them to, or if there was somebody that could handle the custodian side of it, um, at least in the mornings, that would, that would make our vacancy and our emergency maintenance or when we're at full capacity, the ability to maintain and not do the deferred maintenance much better. So we'll be talking to you that. This is, this is not a ask at this point. Um, it's just a heads up that that's, that's kind of the end of the line there, but there really is another one, um, that should be custodian after those guys. And then below you see Mandy and we have the housing manager. Uh, thankfully, I mentioned Kat is back, Catherine is back. She came back Monday. Um, and I've only been here really two weeks in this capacity. And, um, I can tell that everyone was just counting the minutes until Kat got back because of how much she contributes and the load the section eight carries and her expertise. And it's been great to having, having her back in the office and having people, um, not stretched to cover. So Kat is back. Um, and this is a new position right here that we're, we're wanting to talk to you about and give you a heads up because next, next month we will be talking to you about what this looks like, how we can afford to do it and why it's necessary, um, because of the and why it's necessary um because of the what we're talking about, what you've heard with occupancy and handling those applications and turning them over. And then as we begin to really address the residence and the retention part of it. It it is not possible for one person, Patrick O'Neil, to do that. He thinks he he tries to do that, and it is it's just not possible. So um he does more than I think anyone I've ever seen in housing. And it's really a two or three or four-person job, and he's he's trying to do it all right now. So that is really the the most pressing need is to have somebody there to assist to help cover FHI plus all the public housing and to help him with residents. It's it's a HUD does not recommend anyone over to have a caseload of ninety to a hundred. That's pretty high. In in reality, his caseload is over two hundred. And when he was helping with some Section Eight, you know, that's that's even more, so it's a.
So is this some of the things that Alyssa's been doing?
This yeah, absolutely. So there you go, yes. So you're familiar with what Alyssa's been doing to help, which means that we really haven't had an office assistant, and that's where Alyssa is. And she's transitioned back now that Kat is back because Kat has been helping Patrick uh or not Kat, I'm sorry. Alyssa has been helping Patrick with Section Eight, um and so is Mandy. But now that Kat's back, Alyssa is back as the assistant, office assistant. And there is not a person to keep uh those files moving in a productive way and dealing with residents in a productive way for Patrick. Alyssa Alyssa is going to um be helping as much as she can. But there there are two distinct roles here, and we're asking everybody to do more. But at some point, which is I'm telling you month, we're going to be asking for this position um to help Patrick.
I assume we'll be able to afford it when we raise our income by renting more units.
That's we we will uh we'll give you the best information of how we can afford it. And if you agree, then we will move on from there. But if if you don't, we'll we'll uh we'll have to find another way to afford it. But I we wouldn't come to you if we didn't think that we could afford it. I think what Mandy presented earlier is a good picture, and we are in better shape than we were this time last year. How we use that fund those funds and where we put them is really important. And those are decisions you guys are gonna have to make on priorities. But I can tell you that um this at least this staffing person um is is really a big priority if we're gonna be successful doing any of the rest of those things that we might need to use the the funds for later on.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Jan, um so if we're we're just talking about this Assistant Housing Specialist position, and it's it's hopes that that position can help Patrick with the FHI lease-up. So if we can get FHI leased up on the tax credit side, then that eighty-two thousand dollar debt that they owe us can drastically start to come down, and they can start paying their monthly expenses back to us. So um it's it's definitely gonna be a great position to add to the Housing Authority.
Sounds good.
And we'll make the case and give you the financials next month. We just didn't wanna surprise you next month with that. So we're surprising you now, so you have a month to prepare. Go back to. All right, so facilities and capital fund, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on this. You guys have seen those. You had a whole work section or session around the um CNAs. This is something that now Joanne and I are working on. And it also received a energy audit that I could include in here. But this is reap this is a lot of training for me. And so I'm not gonna, I guess, tell you everything that I've learned other than um we did Mandy and I did sit through a repositioning training today about small PHAs and how they that might look. And they they actually asked if they could use our use Manhattan as an example. They use Manhattan Anaconda Montana in um a place in Colorado. And they showed us how that might that might look uh as a small MHA using different types of repositioning tools. So we got some of that um information today. And the the uploading of the CNA CNA has been a little bit bumpy because the E-tool is a new thing, I guess, and it's not really communicating right. But I am working with those folks to get me and get us access. And I do have a call tomorrow with HUD again to talk about financial matters and our recovery plan. But we've had a call about the RAD technical assistance with so that's all gonna be. It's on my radar, and I'll keep you I'll try to find a better way to keep track of that that isn't just a paragraph here because there's a lot in that paragraph that we've done um that has to be done. And I'll 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 do better about showing that timeline, I guess. Again, Mandy talked about it earlier. I talked to Jill Jacoby in the um Flint Hills Improvements, FHI. And we we just kind of talked through the history, the partnership there. They have uh it's an interesting relationship, and you guys are pretty aware of those things. We I'm gonna find out a little bit more about what HUD's perspective is and how that helps or some of the debt or past payments um can be harmful to us. So or the lack of receiving those funds is holding us back in HUD's eyes. So those are all discussions that are on the table and that are happening. No resolution, just just discussions right now. HUD HUD regulations, there's a new secretary. Secretary Marcia Fudge was confirmed. And you probably are aware of the one point nine trillion American Rescue Plan, five billion. We had Mandy and I actually had a new voucher um sent uh kind of the 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 six the in the since they passed it, they had sixty days to decide how they're going to roll out these new emergency vouchers. And we learned that roughly the well, first of all, there's gonna be two types of vouchers, and they shouldn't really be confused. So if we can start off by understanding that there's a emergency-type voucher, and that sunsets, and it actually sunsets in twenty twenty-three. So and it's a five billion dollars. It's a massive amount of money going into these these new emergency vouchers. They're treated as section as you would Section Eight vouchers. The eligibility on them is is a little bit um broad. It's pretty broad, and they're still being defined. And we don't know who and how many we are getting. We we don't know who all is getting them and how they're being distributed. But the best estimate they have is about seventy thousand new vouchers will be rolling out. And um I don't know, we'll find out in the next fifty days of how many we get and how we're supposed to manage those. The the other part of that is a forty-three million. Remember, that was five billion. Forty-three million is more like what they normally do. So that's just shows you how like huge that amount is for vouchers. But forty-three million is another pot of money that came through with that plan. And that's creating another class of like a category of voucher. You might be familiar with the HUD VASH vouchers. And then there's um some unification vouchers, family unification. Well, they're creating another one, and it's most likely it's so new, it hasn't even really been named yet. But it's most likely going to be called a housing stability voucher. And it's meant to address and probably give preference to like rapid rehousing. So that might be chronically homeless, domestic violence, and then veterans. So it's not really it's almost like it's combining um some of the elements of the other programs, but they're putting a new money into it and creating some preference. And it might actually be valuable for the domestic violence. We we have used those vouchers, and those would have their own special kind of category um with preference in a new. And those are permanent. Those are not sunsetting in twenty twenty-three. So that forty-three million dollars will be refunded um as long as those vouchers exist. And there's no uh there's no end date where the emergency vouchers, the five billion dollars, does sunset in twenty twenty-three. But what that means for people that receive them, let's say you get one in July of twenty twenty-three, as long as you have that um and as long as you qualify, you can keep it. So in theory, you could have that voucher the rest of your life. They just won't be able to use transfer if somebody either doesn't qualify based on income anymore or does decides they don't need it. So that that's kind of it'll it'll rein itself in over time. But they're not they're not planning to just cut everyone off in twenty twenty-three. The emergency assistance, another big deal, um hundred and eighty million dollars is in Kansas right now for rental assistance, and that is and it's a huge number. Usually, we talk about twenty million dollars being a lot for rental assistance for people in Kansas. This is a hundred and eighty million dollars that they that renters are eligible to have access to. And landlords, actually Patrick worked today. Another thing Patrick's been doing, um he got us registered as a vendor with the state. So all of the tenants that we have that are going to potentially request CARES assistance, we've already secured our vendor number, so we've done what we need to do as a landlord in that sense um for the tenants to receive their assistance. So that that's uh rolled out this last May. And a hundred and eighty million dollars is a ton of money. But when Congress passed their American Rescue Plan, they doubled it. So if they doubled the amount that's going into emergency rental assistance, if that holds the same formula of how they distributed it last time, that would mean another hundred and eighty million dollars coming to Kansas in the next couple of months for rental assistance. So really, it's a these numbers are are just astronomical compared to what everyone's used to. COVID nineteen, you are familiar with the vaccine. We are having that clinic on Friday, and the Health Department is going to be here ten to to noon. Alyssa and Patrick uh went and delivered those flyers and got them to every door. And I know we have signs at the in the elevators and on around the buildings. Residents are talking about it. People are um telling me unsolicited about it that live in the different buildings, and I think we'll have a decent turnout. I've I've talked to the Mercury, um our neighbor, about um parking in case we have people show up. And I think we're gonna be able to park uh people. That that is one concern that I wasn't it's hard to forecast how many people might show up and all at once or because we're offering this to all of the residents and all of the different uh public housing sites. So there could be folks from across town that drive over and wanna make sure they have a good place to park. So we should be good to go on that. And been dealing with some other grievance process and hearings on those things. And actually had my first private hearing today, and that is something Joanne's been helping me through. It's pretty straightforward. It's just a matter of making sure that we're going through the right uh channels. And then I I did talk with Craig on Monday just to make sure that um him and I were on the same page of how the legal counsel helps um through any of those processes that get beyond the MHA or the executive director. That's that vaccine. You're familiar with that um this Friday. And all right, finally, I have I I really wanted to provide you more of a detailed marketing plan because I I know we have lots of things already in motion, and they just need to be put in writing for you and and laid out in a timeline. But initially, this was going to show I know Mandy and I have have worked to get our Facebook reach up. We both have invited a lot of people to like the page. You can see that there's a twenty-six thousand percent increase in page likes. And uh we're 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 doing good on the reach. That's eighteen hundred people have seen or uh interacted in some way potentially with a Manhattan Housing Authority post in the last month, which is a two thousand percent increase. So those increases are are also astronomical numbers, and they'll they'll level off pretty quick. But uh it's been nice to have those conversations and and amongst Alyssa, Patrick, and myself about how we can use social media as a tool, and then what other traditional media will we use to kind of roll out the updates of the application process, the website? And you guys are, I'm sure, aware, but there's about eight. There's there's a lot of credit with KSNT because they have the weather camera on the roof here. So we will be able to use some TV commercials once we get those done. And that includes actually in the contract that I have with that that has been sitting in the drawer here. It includes production, and so they could even help us make those commercials. It's a it's a large amount of money because we haven't used it. And it's been about five years worth of annual um just sitting there growing, collecting credit. There's that, and of course, all of the traditional media. We have a Trello account that I set up. Uh we haven't really tapped into using that Trello quite yet. The vaccine information and kind of got in the way of me getting focused. I was gonna focus on the marketing plan and then got word that they wanted to be here this Friday. And so we we instead of doing that, we really were marketing to our residents, trying to tell them about the the vaccine option, so. Yes.
Can you explain what Trello is for those who may not know?
Yeah, well, Trello can be used as is just kind of a a tool to show. Well, we're gonna use it for marketing and social media. It can be used for lots of things. But it's really just kind of a way to assign tasks, to monitor tasks, to hold each accountability and to share. So if it's Mandy, myself, and Alyssa that are working on our marketing plan, we can plan out those social media posts uh for months, and we could plug in different like like I I I don't know if you've seen, but the like the K-Man visits, right? So we're gonna have the you got each commissioner maybe going on K-Man. You may have a topic, like it might be Fair Housing Month as in April. We can build marketing plan out on Trello, and then as things come from different places, we can plug that in. It's interactive and see what other see what each other are doing. This is all internal before it gets published. And it just helps, I think, consolidate and show allow us to work together a little bit more digitally. The other digital part is Adobe Pro is we we are now gonna be using Adobe Pro. Got licenses today, and I think. And I think that's been a that that's been a uh I don't know. There there was I've never seen so many so much excitement around just getting Adobe Pro from uh staff, I guess. Uh so they they're excited to have Alyssa especially is excited to have that as a PDF so we can adjust and update and move away maybe from Microsoft Publisher, some of these other um programs that we've had in the past. And that that transition also aligns with RIT transitioning us to Office three sixty with that happened, I guess, in the last month. It seems like a long time ago, but we're we've got a bunch of new software and we're all learning to use it together. So it's not like one thing is different. It's all different. We're all learning on it together and went ahead and added the Adobe Pro in there. It's about fifty dollars a month, but it's going to really simplify and help us share documents, your board packets, um signing things, all electronical stuff. Um so I we've been doing a lot.
Yes, you have. Yes, I'm I'm particularly um impressed with the COVID um vaccines. I think that's really critical. And I think we we may have a diverse enough community that it will be useful to be reaching some people that haven't, some groups that haven't been reached, um which will be a really good thing for us to to say that we helped. Um so I think that's just great.
Appreciate that. A lot of our a lot of our tenants may not have vehicles and couldn't go out to the distribution point at Seco Park. I'm I'm just thrilled that the health department was able to coordinate with you so that they could come on site. Um because not everyone is as able uh to uh if both physically and vehicle-wise, all of those, I'm glad.
One one thing, um and we're doing our best to kind of respect people's privacy and their decisions and it in HIPAA to that extent. Um but one thing I learned is that a lot of the folks, especially in Carlton, have have had access to vaccinations through uh the pharmacy downtown. And some of them have gotten them actually uh on-site there. Um so it's been, there's been some things happening, maybe in the that I we weren't aware of. So there there there's quite a few people that are vaccinated that probably um initially I didn't think they might not have that option, but uh Barry's downtown is has been helping some of those folks with uh and Johnson and John, I think they might even have had the one shot um available since it was through a different contract than the health department. So.
They have one thing, Aaron, that and I mentioned this to you in a in an email. Um this brought to mind to me that we don't have any system where if there was an emergency that we could you know, text out to everybody or email everybody or call everybody. Um and it seems like that might be an important thing to be looking at.
Yes.
Uh you know, in the future, I mean, I I I know people don't like robo calls, but if it came from the housing authority to every resident or a text, I I I don't know what would be the best way to do that. But so that Patrick and Alyssa don't have to run around to put a poster in everybody's door.
I I was I was joking with them this morning that they are our emergency alert system. Patrick and Alyssa running around um doing that, but uh it's not just with this and an emergency. It's 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 also just the monthly updates. It's the information about Kara. It's a, you know, any of this housing assistance programs. It would be nice to get that information quickly to people. And so that's when you go to our website uh right now, you're prompted to enter an email to register. So because we don't have the email, we don't even have emails for all the residents. And maybe some of them don't have emails, which is fine, but a lot of them do. So we're trying to collect that. We if we collect the emails and we collect a good contact number, then we could have a tool like you're talking about where we push out a text or an alert during an emergency and then maybe just use that email software to give them updates monthly.
It's also just a a bit of data you could add to forms that people fill out so that fill it out, the regular forms, they're giving us that information. Or when they pay their rent or whenever they contact us, you know, just make sure. But I mean, it's interesting what situations bring certain thoughts to mind that we didn't have before. So this was really pointed out. We have no way of reaching everybody all at once.
Right.
So you included in here the document and the whole thing for the agreement with the city. And I feel like we've all seen this before.
Yes, so I'm not gonna spend time on that other than that's the benchmark. For, all right, so you you've definitely all seen this. I included it because this has been signed since last meeting. Um so we have a copy signed by the Maron here just for our records. Um but it also is, I went the wrong way.
We need to, we need to be seeing some of the blanks filled in here of things that are done. Because this was just the blank.
Yes, and I'm I'm meeting with, I have tomorrow morning to meet, I have that HUD call with Doug Martin, who's our portfolio manager for the region and uh Adam or Austin, Adam, Adam Austin, sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, yes, that's his name.
But uh.
Adam Austin, I remember.
Yes, and so we're talking about the financials side of it. They what I want to do is boil this down into things that you can see where the there's progress on, but this this document's just the benchmark. And there has been progress. Uh there's been some progress on things. And they're they want to give me an inventory of what they think there's been progress on and what they they need proof of to show that on a document like that. And some of those things are um moving targets because they've said that they didn't need those. And now that they need them to show us that there's proof. So I've met with the city, for example, uh community development, I met with them uh Christine and Eric to get some of the a plan around the lead-based lead-based paint testing, uh the environmental reviews. Just just kind of run around collecting documents to show that we have these things. But they didn't initially didn't say we needed to show them. So it's kind of, I'm just in a phase where I'm fetching documents before I can tell you what we still need to do. Because there's still, we've done a lot. I just need to consolidate it, run it by them, get it approved and then get the boxes that we need to do before the end of the year and but I I don't know what I don't know yet.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Does anybody have anything else? Do do we need, we have usually um had a motion to accept the director's report, but I'm not sure that that's necessary.
I was wondering if, since we've changed the format a little bit, um and this is you can tell me what you think, but when we went into briefing and reports and started, you kind of made a motion to accept, but I think it also maybe approve even. And then we went through them and then you made a motion to approve that. I I don't know that that my thought was we'd go through the briefings and reports all as one, Mandy and I, and then you could make a motion at the end to accept what you just heard from us um uh in going forward. That way, you're not you're not accepting it before we've answered your questions.
Okay, well, that's well, once there's a motion on the floor, then you discuss it and then you accept it. So that's how it works. So does somebody want to make a motion to accept the report that Aaron just gave us?
Moved.
Jamie makes that motion. Who seconds?
I will second.
Linda seconds. Um and does anybody have any additional questions for Aaron? Right now, then I will call the question.
All right, Jan.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Livy.
Yes.
And Kennedy.
Yes.
Uh the next section would be Commissioner Comments. Does anybody have any comment they want to make at this time? Because we have some voting we need to do.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the uptake in communication happening um on the Facebook page. I've been getting alerted pretty frequently this last couple, this last week or so. Um and I really appreciated a post that you made about the uh redlining more recently. So uh about the narrow speaker. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. Especially because I think many of our residents find themselves in this predicament as a result of redlining.
Okay, anything else? So this next section, um we have postponed this conversation previously about um incentives, performance incentives. And i- in our packet, it is the executive director is recommending that we postpone this for one more month. And um I'm perfectly happy to do that. Unless, does anybody object to postponing this conversation again?
I make a motion.
Yes, please make a motion.
I move to table this um employee performance incentive until April, um our April meeting of twenty twenty-one.
I need a second.
Second.
Kennedy seconds. And I don't think we need to discuss it anymore. So I call the question.
Jan.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Livy.
Yes.
And Kennedy.
Yes.
All right, this next section with all of these various resolutions. Am I correct in saying that these are things that we ordinarily do annually? Mandy?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so what about someone making a motion to include all one, two, three, four of the resolutions? And then we can discuss them if we need to. Somebody?
I move, we approve resolution number zero three one seven two one dash A, section eight with proposed utility allowances. Resolution number zero three one seven two one dash.
It's an eight, not a seven. Okay, go ahead. The first two are eights. Zero three one eight two one and zero three one eight two.
I have seven two one. Is I am I looking at the wrong thing?
No, the first two are eights and the second two are sevens.
Mine says seven two also.
Okay.
So I don't know which is right. That's what I'm saying.
Well, we have two, we have two sets of numbers here, Mandy. I'm confused.
Oh, I see where you're seeing the eight. On the new business, it says eight. And then on further down, it says seven.
Yeah, for A and B, it says eight, and for C and D, it says seven. Should they all be eights or all sevens?
They should. I think they should all be sevens and then the effective date is the eighteenth. So that it's the difference between the seventeenth and eighteenth.
Okay, thank you. So let's make it, what Jamie said is now correct.
Okay, so okay, so um I'm going back to resolution number zero three one seven two one dash B, FHI Apartments with proposed utility allowance and resolution number zero three one seven two one dash C, is this correct? Public housing with proposed utility allowances.
And there's one more. There's a D.
And zero three one seven two one dash D, operating budget revision, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was bouncing between pages. I wanted to make sure I got the.
I need a second for that motion.
Second.
Uh Kennedy seconds. Just do do we want anybody to talk about any of those in particular? Does Aaron, do you feel like you need to?
I'll give you just a brief uh very short summary. The utility, there there's some some variance in the utilities, but I'll tell you um in part, you're gonna the tenants are gonna pay a little bit more. Um but that is because the subsidy is coming down. Um and the subsidy is coming down because we're saving energy. So it it doesn't make, it's kind of counterintuitive that the tenant's gonna end up paying more, but it's because there's less of a subsidy because we're actually saving energy through our energy performance contract. So um if it doesn't make sense at the first glance, just think back and remember it's because we're trying, the energy performance contract actually saves the organization funds, but that means more proportionally, a couple of dollars might be added to the tenant. And the the fluctuation is really more, not more than two dollars. Um and sometimes that's a big deal, but it it's been worse in the past where there's been ten dollar jumps. This year, it's only uh one or two.
Okay, and the next one? We have all four of them in here, so.
Well, the so those, that's I for all the utility line uh allowances, Mandy, um that budget resolution or revision was included in there. And that revision has to do with the change in pay for the executive direct or assistant executive director. And I think that that summarizes all the new business.
Okay.
I would just make a comment. I'm not objecting to any of this, but I don't know what page this is. Uh it's no page number. Uh under section eight, HCV program, it talks about the first point, bullet point is that uh electric rates in tier one have decreased two percent. Now, I don't know any place that electric rates have um have gone down. West Star has only gone up. Uh but you know, this that's your consultant's report also. So just to say, I just want to say that because I sometimes you just.
Yeah, I'll
It's probably some cockeyed way of figuring it out.
Sometimes the decrease means an increase of rate, but a decrease in because consumption.
But this says the rate has gone down and the and the actual amounts may have gone down, but the rate West Star's, nothing about West Star has ever gone down in recent history.
I'll double check. I I know it did say ten percent decrease last year, so I don't know. I mean, it's less.
I'm not arguing, I'm just noting, I think, is what I want to say.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about any of those A, B, C or D items? Then I will call the question.
Jan.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
And Livy.
Yes.
Okay, and the last item here says board member training orientation handbook for commissioners. I I don't know. Aaron, you want to talk about that?
So I'm I'm adding these and I'll try to add each month a couple of items and not just, not because I think everybody needs orientation, um but we're gonna be adding two new members, right? Um at some point and they can always go back on our website or potential people that are interested in what is in, what it takes, what's involved um in being a commissioner. They can look at that commissioner's handbook and it'll tell them basically what it's gonna take, how much time it's gonna take and and what get a feel for what the documents look like, what their responsibilities will be. Um it's it's hard to explain what you guys do. Um but these documents help and the video helps. Uh it's a fifteen-minute video that talks about how a from a commissioner. And the video helps, uh, it's a fifteen-minute video that talks about how, uh, from a commissioner's standpoint, how they can hold us as staff and, um, the financial side, um, particularly, uh, accountable in the budget, what to look for in variances. And I think it's important that you guys have those tools, so it's not just us telling you, these are the numbers, take them or leave them, it's, you can look for, um, what should be in there. According, and this is, these are videos crafted by HUD, they want the board to be, just like they said, you know, they want the board to be, uh, aware and know to hold us accountable. So that's, that's what this is for, that last asset repositioning is about success stories with repositioning and RAD, um, some other things that you've, you've kind of had before. But I put it on there just in case there's commissioners in the future that want to come back. And so we have a place, a consolidated place on our agendas for several months, where there's board training, board orientation, and once that's all gathered, I will put that in a file that we can have and keep and show that we've all, we've had access to this training. We've had, uh, new board members had access to this training, and, and HUD can be very happy that everybody's up to speed.
And well, can you make those available from the website as well?
Yeah, and they, so I, I can make them available on the website, um, under, like, yeah, a dropdown menu. Right now, if somebody is watching or interested, they could go and look at our agenda on the website and open it and click those links from the agenda. So people can get to it through the website if they open the agenda, um, that's, that Mandy uploaded to the website, uh, yesterday, the revised one.
Okay, that's, I think that sounds great, I would like to admonish the, um, existing board members. If you have any ideas of someone who might be a good addition to the board, um, you might try recruiting, the one person I recruit was trying to recruit, turned me down solidly. Um, and I haven't come up with another idea. Um, and we also need to be looking for a resident, um, person. And one recommendation, uh, one suggestion that Joanne made was that perhaps Ida's daughter might be interested, because she is a housing person. Um, I, I think it would be quite lovely of us to, um, extend that offer to her. And then if she is interested in doing that with us, um, to, um, let her know how, what she has to do, the form she has to fill out that goes to the city, because I think the city will even appoints that person. I'm pretty sure, I mean, I just been with this all the time, I've been on the, and so that situation hasn't come up in, in my time on the board, so.
I think the city is in the process of, of better explaining on the, the application form, working with the housing authority, I think, to better explain, uh, or collect better data from applicants, because this is not just, you know, and there are a couple of boards like this, uh, the urban area planning board maybe, and uh, I don't know, some, a couple of others, that it's not just, and we are not an advisory board, uh, where we don't just come and say, raise our hand and say, I, this is, uh, I don't know, I spend hours. I'm sure you do.
This is a very hardworking board, especially in the last two years.
Yep.
And hopefully, as we repair our issues, um, we will have less hard work.
Yeah.
Um, it looks like Erin and Mandy are working together as a great team to move us in the right direction, so I'm very excited about that. But I, I do feel like just five, five of us is, is real short. I, I would love to see, um, us get some new people.
The, there are, so I, what Commissioner Morris just mentioned, the city is described, uh, there's advisory boards, that's kind of level one, there's quasi judicial boards is like a level two, that might be your zoning or planning type of things. And then there's a level three, which includes, uh, everything from budgets, fiscal liability to, um, judicial things and, um, buying and selling property. Those, all of the functions that really could exist on a board. And that is the housing authority, uh, the library board, and the law board all have those powers. Um, so it's, it is a lot more, eh, to do than a normal advisory kind of tier one board. And I know that the city's got, has received, has been receiving a few applications. Um, and, but, but they do need residents. And I don't know that even the city has been very clear about that. Um, and they, there is one at large, and there's one resident, um, that can be somebody in section eight and somebody, or somebody that utilizes our program, sex, section eight or public housing. And so that, that, that's being sought, I guess, and if you have ideas, and we'll, we'll reach out to Ida. I know there's one, that reminds me, uh, as a memorial to Ida, Joanne has talked, um, to me about a bench, and I think we are going to, we're working on how that might look um, in front of the building here, uh, at the apartment towers, and a, a little kind of cutout area that, of cement where there, a bench could be with a memorial dedicated. Um, I've actually talked to, I have a meeting Friday with Michael Gassman, um, he wants to make the bench. Um, and so he would donate the labor involved in there, and then we would talk about what the supplies are, because we, we did, uh, look at those benches, and they're expensive, man, um, and so.
One and two thousand dollars for those that you see downtown on, on the intersection.
But, uh, Michael believes he can make a, a quality one, and then we can have a, a, somebody that can keep an eye on it if it ever needs repairs, but, uh.
That'd be wonderful.
That'd be lovely.
That's on the radar.
Okay, then I had one other thing, is April is usually the month where we have our, uh, so-called annual meeting, where in the past, we've met in the city commission room, which I don't think we will probably do this April, and we will have elections, so. Livy?
Huh?
You're muted.
Livy, you're muted.
After that gets answered, I have another question.
Okay. So I don't know what we want to do about that.
Joanne mentioned at the February meeting that she was sending a notice to the current tenants and in a newsletter or otherwise, to solicit, um, folks that might be interested in serving on this board. And so I was looking for a report today, or a cop, I, I had, I asked for a copy of that, uh, communication with the tenants, because there's not been a, I, I was glad that, um, Joanne, before she left, did a newsletter to the tenants. And so I thought, eh, anyway, that maybe not have worked out yet, but it still can. And so I just would like for the board to be in, kept informed on things like that, that we specifically request.
Yes, the, the newsletter, um, I, that's the challenge, I tried to, it's gone out to tenants, and it did include that piece, uh, asking for, uh, applicants. And the challenge of getting that to you guys, it was because it used the old software, and it created eleven by seventeen in publisher, um, and, and so when I tried to create that as a PDF to send it to you, it's all chopped up, um, which going forward now, we're all kind of using the Adobe, it'll be easier to do stuff like that. But we do have hard copies, um, for you, Linda, I know you love hard copies.
No, I think we got it, didn't we?
Okay.
Other members of the board, didn't you see the newsletter? I did at some point. I don't remember what context, but I'm sure I did.
I didn't see it.
Unfortunately, we haven't had, I haven't seen a lot of response, um.
You could still send it to us, Erin.
Okay.
Well, you could just, you could, uh.
If nobody's seen it, send it.
Well, from the residents applying, because the residents have read the newsletter, and they've seen that, I just, they, we haven't seen an uptick in applications to be on the board, um, there has been, the, this is kind of another, I guess, good consequence of having a maintenance person assigned to each site, so they build some familiarity with the tenants, and as that discussion happens, we're trying to also, um, get those resident advisory boards, there are almost like site councils you might think of at a school, uh, established. So it's, it does, there's people that might not be interested in being on this board, but they sure want to represent their building, and maybe eventually, so we're working at both ends, um.
The only people I've heard of that might be interested in serving on the board are section eight, I haven't really heard of public housing, but there may be people there too.
Ida was a section eight.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
Livy, your question?
It, it kind of goes back to that, but I've, I've been contacted by, um, a resident who was just kind of lost as to, it, it's kind of buried on the city website, and it's also, there's nowhere really to designate that you're a resident. It's just a part of what you write in your application, um, the, the application is really inadequate for this level of board. It is more for like the, the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board, um, or something like that. So do you know if there, is there a timeline for when that's all going to change? And would it happen bef- before we get our new board members, or should we try? I, I, I don't know what it takes people to expect, because they're also like, well, when will I find out? And how many people, do they wait for a certain number of applications, or, you know?
I don't think anything's happening fast at the city that involves, you know, anything legal or, um, it's, so I just encourage people, I mean, help them get there is all. And the next time around, it'll be better, I, because we just started these conversations a little over, like, maybe, well, two months ago initially, but seriously, like a month ago. And that, it, it, they've got, it's kind of like, uh, the way they're set up, they have one application form. So they're gonna, uh, that fits all, and they're gonna have to come up with separate application forms for some of these boards. And so I think they're taking a more holistic approach, which means it's gonna take longer, my spin.
I, I, um, I inquired about that because I wanted to promote it. Um, and, but I didn't, again, wanted to wait until we, should we promote the old form, or is there gonna be a new one? The, uh, the feedback I got, um, and even from the current mayor, who is actually the person that would kind of vet and select who those applications are, is have them apply now, um, and have them not wait on the form. And, and it might be a while, like, uh, Commissioner Morris just said, um, but don't wait on the city to change the forms, maybe send them if they're coming to you, so you can direct them to me. And I, what I, I kind of have a form response, I, to people, that include that commissioner handbook of what to expect. Here's the website at the city, and then the mayor, how that process works, the mayor appoints, and then the commission would advise and consent. I also throw in there that I'm not part of that process, no matter what, so, um, just to be clear. Uh, but, uh, the, you can do that if they need more information, you can send them my way, you can do that yourself. If you want that, I can send you the link, um, or direct them to the mayor, because he's gonna be reaching out to those people anyway. Um, so.
Yeah, the other thing, the other concern that was raised was that this person didn't find out about the vacancy for a tenant, um, through the housing authority, which I understand is, I mean, you can't control how they find out. But, um, this person had not heard anything through the housing authority and wondered why it wasn't being broadcast. Now, granted, this was within maybe a month of the opening, and we were still kind of figuring this all out. But, um, as many channels, I think, as we can get the word out over is probably best.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll focus after the vaccine stuff and the, I think, well, it's a great opportunity for social media. Um, the, it speaks to, um, Jan's point that it'd be really awesome if we could notify all the residents quickly. Um, and they did, I'm sure they did receive notification of the, the vacancy, but it was on a piece of paper that they may or may not have looked at. Um, so if we can get their emails and get them registered and get, then start hit, hit, hit them with information, that way it'll be, that'll improve.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I think that, um, we've covered a lot of territory tonight. If anybody doesn't have anything else to add, it's seven thirty-seven, and I'm hungry and tired. And I think we should say toodleoo, we'll see you next week, next month.
Bye, thank you, guys.